Well, good evening, everybody. It's now six o'clock and at this time, the New Bern Board of Aldermen will now convene. And at this time, Alderman Bobby Astor is going to do the prayer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Keeping with my tradition, I would like to ask Chief Bobby Boyd to come forward and give the prayer for us tonight.
By our heads, our heavenly precious Father, first of all, we just want to thank you. We thank you from the bottom of our hearts of all the many blessings you have bestowed on each and every one of us. Father, we take a lot of things for granted in our lives. We do not want to take anything for granted because everything comes from you. We come to you in this hour asking for your blessing and help us as we gather together. We pray for guidance in the matters at hand and ask that you would clearly show us how to conduct our work with a spirit of joy and enthusiasm. Give us the desire to find a way to excel in our work and we give you all the glory in Jesus' name. Amen.
Would you join me in the pledge of allegiance to fight our country? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Ma'am clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Beagle?
Here.
Alderwoman Harris?
Present.
Alderman Astor?
Here.
Mayor Outlaw?
Here.
Alderman Kinsey?
Here.
Alderman Bess?
Present.
Alderman Odom?
Here.
Okay, everybody's here. Before we get going on requests and petitions, citizens, I would like to welcome Garber United Methodist Church, Street 132, Truth Leader David Oglesby. And if you would, if they could come forward and come to the podium and tell us who you are, what your names are. We appreciate you coming up and being a part of the meeting tonight.
I'm Jacob Oglesby.
I'm Danny Fairhead.
I'm Lyndon Nelson.
Well, we thank you so much for being with us tonight. Our first petition tonight is from Stephen Kennedy. If you'd like to come forward, give your name and address for the record.
Yes, my name is Stefan Kennedy. And just give my name.
Stefan, yes, we have it written.
Okay.
Come right ahead, sir. What was your address, sir?
Oh, my address is 105 Bridgewater Trail in New Bern.
Come right ahead.
Okay, this is my first time coming, so I just wanted to come and speak about the legalization of cannabis here in the future. I'm an advocate for it. There's thousands of reasons really why, but ultimately, I just think that if we just open with a prayer, you know, that God put a seed on the world and we can use it to help people and prevent some suffering and make people's lives a little bit better. So, I think that's a good thing. I could probably talk for an hour about all the reasons why, but ultimately, I just think that if there's medicine, then we should be able to use it and it should be regulated, you know, by the state so that they can, you know, make some money and keep things going on their end. So, that's really all I have to say.
Well, thank you for coming up with that, sir.
Thank you.
Our next petition is George Evans. If you'd like to come forward.
Mr. Mayor and Alderman, my name is George Evans. I live downtown, 216 Metcalf Street, and I currently serve as president of the historic downtown residents association known as HYDRA. HYDRA has more than 300 individual members in about 170 households, as well as 50 or so business affiliate members. Most of those members live right outside the window here, are out the door, and they work downtown. Many of our members were badly impacted by Florence. On behalf of the HYDRA Board of Directors, I'm here to express our strong support for the presentations made by Nelson McDaniel and Bill Sharrett at the October '22 meeting. They spoke as Members of CARE, citizens advocating for resilience and education, in particular to urge this city to locate and retain a professional-level, credentialed individual to serve as a chief resilience officer to oversee the drafting and implementation of a comprehensive resiliency plan, not somebody in the future, but somebody right now. Such a person would have primary responsibility for New Bern's actions to minimize the effect of future weather-related disasters, as well as recovery from such events, and including building stronger partnerships with other government bodies, federal, state, and local. We understand that the city has now taken the first steps to create such a plan by soliciting a proposal, but we also understand from the reaction at the October '22 meeting that there's currently no interest in having anybody hired now to make sure that that plan moves ahead immediately. The minutes of the October '22 meeting unfortunately do not set out the particular points made by Mr. McDaniel and Mr. Sharrett, but the scope of what such a person would have to work on is pretty well set out in the request for proposal that has gone out and is now there should be responses due, I think, this week. I hope each of you have reviewed that RFP carefully, especially the review criteria on page six. The city anticipates it's going to take six figures to create a plan over the next many number of months. What is not clear is who would be primarily responsible to make sure that that plan is implemented and modified as needed. What CARE proposes is a proactive approach. Matthew and Dorian were near misses here, 15 miles either way, and we could have had another Florence. Florence was 15 months ago and we still have construction traffic on virtually every street downtown. Downtown businesses continue to suffer revenue loss. Scientists tell us that this is not an isolated problem, that the kinds of weather we're experiencing now is due to global warming, a dynamic process that all who know what they're talking about expect to get worse in the future. The call for resilience for a resilience executive is not a criticism of the staff's hard work and success following Florence. We encourage you to publicize what has been done and is in the works so that the community can better understand your work in the future. Some of that information is available on Facebook. Unfortunately, very little of it seems to get into the Sun Journal. We are grateful for all that has been done and is in the works, but we believe that we need a person whose primary duty is resilience, planning, and preparation, and we believe that the need is urgent. The process to prepare and implement a plan is just now beginning 15 months after Florence. New Bern is, I think everybody in this room would agree, the finest coastal city in North Carolina. It's a tourist magnet due to its vibrant downtown. We need to be...
Mr. Stevens, your four minutes is up, sir.
Okay.
And we really appreciate you coming up today.
We ask that you consider now hiring such a person rather than delaying that for two or three more years down the road.
Yes, sir. Thank you for coming up, sir. 2303 Woodland Avenue. Okay, Jason Weldon. Jason, if you would, give us your name and address for the record.
Name is Jason Weldon, 2823 Ashland Avenue. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak here tonight. You know, not even two years ago, I wouldn't have been able to speak here due to a severe migraines and social anxiety that's improved with the help of medical cannabis. Not only does it help my anxiety, it improves my ability to function daily in activities I wouldn't otherwise be able to fully enjoy and participate in because medical cannabis improves my focus, gives me clarity, and alleviates hellacious migraines I have suffered from since a horrific car accident in 2005 that according to doctors should have left me dead. I spent three and a half weeks in a coma. I spent years of therapy after I woke up, pretty much being re-taught the basics of life and learning how to function in society, with multiple medications being pumped into my system, one after the other, just to partially rid my body of pain and my brain of constant thoughts, fears, and emotional instability. The traumatic brain injury I suffered from also left me with painful and debilitating migraines that would occasionally send me to the hospital. When I was told about medical cannabis and became truly educated about its benefits, I had to try it to see if it could benefit me as it has others. I can now attend church with my wife and two sons, which is something I couldn't do just a short while ago. Something that is supposed to be a positive experience, a place of worship and praise, was painful for me due to the benefits of medical cannabis. I can sit and watch my boys play sports and their parts in our church Christmas play. I can sing praise and worship songs and I can listen to the sermon without having to leave due to a migraine or because of my anxiety. I'm able to complete tasks that many would find simple because I'm able to think clearly to focus on what's in front of me and how to finish it. It's an awesome feeling to be able to accomplish something without fighting pain or worry. I ask that you consider the benefits of medical cannabis and the positive effects it's had on the people here in our town and your surrounding neighbors. I'm a walking testament that medical cannabis works. It's given me a better quality of life and for that, I'm eternally grateful. Thank you for your time. God bless.
Brayboy.
I'm sorry, that was, oh, I'm sorry. Looked like an A.
No problem. People mistake my name all the time.
Thank you, sir.
So, my name's Justin Brayboy. I just want to thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Address, sir. Address.
Oh, 1007 Meadow Street here in New Bern. I'm here to just speak on cannabis. I'll speak from personal experience and maybe make a statement, but basically, with my experience, like the gentleman who spoke before me, I've had a lot of issues with anxiety, depression, bipolar disorder even, and I went through the pharmaceutical company, I went through, you know, spoke with psychiatrists and doctors and did everything I could to alleviate that stuff, but the medications they gave me tended to have a lot of unwanted side effects. When I started implementing using cannabis to alleviate those issues, I noticed a much better improvement in my life and it's just, it's just night and day difference, you know? You're on Lamictal, you're on Litutin, you're on all these other pharmaceuticals, and they just have all these harsh side effects where, you know, with cannabis, you know, there's little to no harsh side effects, you know? You may have an increased appetite, you know, but other than that, nothing lasting or permanently damaging like some of the medications that the pharmaceutical industry push on us. I myself, and I apologize for my attire, but I am a skilled laborer. I do construction every day. I come home every day in pain, but you know what I don't have? An opioid addiction. In place of having to deal with the potential for having me be another part of this opioid crisis in America, I chose to use cannabis to alleviate that and it's been greatly effective. And it's just here, like in New Bern, this is a great city, but there is a dark side to it. There is a lot of people that are hooked on opioids and other illicit substances that are detrimental to people's lives. Everybody in this community is affected by it. Cannabis is one of those things that is very effective for helping people with various disorders and ailments. To me, it is a travesty that this plant that, if you're religious, God put on this planet for us to use, is made illegal because of some former small-minded policies from our past in this country. In 2019, I see that it's time for a change. It's time for us to look at cannabis seriously as an alternative to the medications that the pharmaceutical companies force us to take as medicine every day. And that's really all I have to say on the matter. And I thank you, gentlemen, ladies, and gentlemen, for allowing me to speak, and y'all have a great evening. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Aaron Davenport of 704 Terragon Court. I'm here to speak today on the use of cannabis as not only a medical alternative to things such as Justin mentioned, like opiates, to even a recreational use. The way I look at marijuana being illegal in this day and age, it's almost like a prohibitionary point. There's no real point to it being illegal as it harms nobody. Nobody's ever died from marijuana, but on top of that, it's beneficial for taxes, it's got a lot of benefits, and to be honest, I didn't really realize that I signed up to speak. So, that's all I've got to say and thank you guys very much.
Good evening.
Good evening.
And first of all, thank you all for being here to take the time to listen to us. I am here also for the legalization of medical cannabis.
Could you give us your address?
Oh, I'm sorry, 100 Joshua Norman Drive. I'm here because I have two nieces who are suffering every day from Lyme's disease. They have to the point where they can't eat, they've lost so much weight, and thank God that they're in a state where it is legal and they're able to, you know, they're of age where they're able to, you know, partake in it for them, you know, for get relief from pain, able to eat. And also, on behalf of my mother, who suffered from Alzheimer's, I had to watch her suffer and it was the worst thing I had ever experienced. She got to the point where, you know, she couldn't eat, she couldn't speak, and thank God our hospice nurses were there to guide us and to help us and help her, and they're the ones that recommended that we give her, you know, the CBD oil to help her with her pain, to help her, you know, just calm her. She was a totally different person, you know, and it just crushed my heart to see her suffer like that, but also, they were in a state where it was legal and they were able to, you know, to help her. And that's why I'm here, on behalf of all those people that are suffering. I do have fibromyalgia myself and I suffer every day, you know, with pain, and I just thank you all for giving us the time, you know, to speak out to, you know, something that's very important, and I also feel that, you know, there's no reason why they shouldn't legalize it. But thank you for your time. Have a nice evening.
Did I miss anybody that filled out a petition, citizens? Did I miss anybody from the audience? Beg for Eth.
Is there some from last week? Is that what you said? I don't know if there's more papers. Did you check up there? There's nothing, there's nothing up there with Sampson.
That's all of them right here. Eth, would you?
There's none over there? Is that what you said?
She had a paper there from last time. She thought you all, she didn't really check to speak last time because she was too busy. You all recorded again this time.
I see. There was ones from the last meeting, but it was after we started. I think is what she's saying. It's probably included. I have no problem with her coming up.
Will I make a motion?
I make a motion that we allow Ms. Sampson to speak. Second?
Motion, same as their discussion. Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye. All opposed, same. Motion carries.
Thank you very much. I earned this.
Yes, ma'am. Get up those stairs, you earned it.
My name is Ethel Sampson. I reside at 1038 Sampson Street. Give an honor to all of you up there. I just want to let y'all know that if the Lord let me live this Sunday, this is when I will be married 64 years. And I've been attending the Alderman meeting for 65 years. I would have missed about, I'd missed anybody 25, and I have been observing during the segregated days, they used to call it a council, instead of Alderman, and they were very, very, very good to the people up in the Duffy Field area. They were always present, and I remember, I remember from a girl, Mel Lutton, and I'll never forget, City Manager, Officer J.C. Outlaw, and Ethel Bingo, and Mel Bogdan during the segregated days. And, you know, and it seems to me as in Duffy Field, seem to be forgotten for some reason or another, but in those days, I know because I've been here lonely, some of you are, and attended these meetings, and they come up there, be the thing that we needed to help us, and when the Alderman couldn't afford it, we had some kind-hearted sales on there, any money, they would always add to what we needed. So, I just want to remind y'all that we still, we still here, we are taxpaying people, and we need, and I never, never, never want y'all to forget Stanley White Medical Center. Thank you.
Ms. Sampson.
Ms. Sampson, by no means do you ever think that I will forget Duffy Field. I just want to let you know that. I will never forget Duffy Field. I know a lot of fine people that lived, have passed on, and still live in Duffy Field, and I will fight to the end for anything that I can do for the Duffy Field community and this city as a whole. I second that.
Thank you.
Okay, this time, let's go to the consent agenda.
I have a question, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
I have a question about the CDB, the grant plan, about the, I know we're thinking of three years of moving monies around. Can, my concern is that within these monies, the individuals that have signed a list to get some renovations to their homes, is this money not included or have this program already, they have, their homes have already been renovated, or how is that money's going to be treated? Is there someone here from the planning department or you, Mr. Stevens, can address that?
Yeah, I think there's people here, but we've got such a packed house, I think they went to another room. Yeah, here comes Amanda. Thank you.
Amanda, did you hear what I was asking?
Yes, I believe that I did. So, it basically is taking unspent line items from the CDDG funds from those three years. I think you're referring to the Housing Minor Repair Program that we have. That has still been active and completed, so it's just moving some funds from unspent funds for projects that weren't completed into a substantial amendment to move forward to spend those funds to meet the HUD requirements.
Okay, all right. So, individuals that signed up for those, for that, for that plan to get some improvements to their homes, this does not affect those individuals? Those projects are complete?
It does not affect those projects for those programming years, correct?
Thank you.
Can I ask her another question concerning this same question? Where are we with the mitigation funds that the people submitted to have their homes raised? Have we received, I thought we were going to get a list?
If you want to cover that under new business, we can do that. That's completely different.
Any other questions about the consent agenda?
May I make a motion? We approve.
Second. Second? Yes. Okay, motion and second is their discussion. Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye. All opposed, same. Motion carries. This time, Mr. Stevens, let's go to item number six.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number six is a presentation on legalizing medicinal cannabis. As you recall, at our November 12, 2019 meeting, the board agreed to allow Mr. Oglesby to come tonight for a presentation on legalizing medicinal cannabis. So, at this point, I'll turn it over to him. He's here tonight to present to you.
Sorry, guys, I'm a little nervous tonight. Never, you know, spoken in a crowd this big, so, you know, getting out, but I just wanted to say good evening to ladies and gentlemen of the board, as well as to the citizens here that have shown up of New Bern, Craven County, and not to mention North Carolina as a whole, because in all honesty, this affects y'all more than anybody else. Thank you so much for allowing me to speak, present, and further inform you on medicinal marijuana. I know there are a few of you who don't think that this is a municipal issue, so I want to genuinely thank you for giving us the opportunity to address you as members of our community and hopefully further the conversation about supporting this with a resolution after you see how this has effects on people right here in New Bern, which you've already heard of. We live in an ironic time that a plant that has been labeled criminal and dangerous is providing numerous health benefits to our society. In fact, this plant contains compounds that help create a wide range of illnesses and symptoms in the human body. Studies have proven that marijuana is an all-natural alternative to slow certain cancers from spreading, control epileptic seizures, ease anxiety, and many more illnesses. The cure for cancer is still unfortunately a mystery, however. Evidence shows marijuana can be very helpful in treating cancer patients with cannabinoids such as THC and CBD that are found in medical marijuana. These cannabinoids have shown to slow cancer growth by inhibiting the formation of new blood cells that feed tumors. Cannabinoids in marijuana have shown to effectively reduce the side effects that cancer patients experience when they go through chemotherapy, such as nausea, diarrhea, extreme pain, and loss of appetite. We ask many from all over our country to come and receive treatment at one of our nation's best cancer facilities, only to tell them that if they partake in cannabis for relief, that they become a criminal. Not only does marijuana help cancer patients, but it also dramatically reduces epileptic seizures in individuals. Unlike many other chronic illnesses that can be managed with over-the-counter supplements, epilepsy requires a specific cocktail of chemicals that cannot be readily available at your local pharmacy. This explains why marijuana specifically, the cannabinoids THC and CBD, have become so important to epileptic struggling individuals. In North Carolina, we have three military bases. One of them is even in our own county, and for that, we should look to the veterans that this would also help if supported, the people who are here today. Twenty-two veteran suicides happen on average every single day. The cause of these suicides come from all sorts of ailments during service, from depression to post-traumatic stress and even night terrors that keep them awake at night. First off, I'd like to say that's 22 too many. Second, what can we do for them? The U.S. Department of Veteran Affairs states that veterans will not be denied VA benefits or care due to marijuana in 2017. Now, all we're waiting for is the support from you and our state representatives to be able to make that an option for others to explore. Veterans sustain a multitude of injuries during active duty and wartime deployments. Some of them injuries include permanent nerve damage to certain areas, traumatic brain injuries, post-traumatic stress, that often have them placed in intense outpatient programs for anxiety and depression issues, as you've heard others have here today, where they receive pill after pill until they interfere with one another and cause further health issues, just to have your doctor change what you're taking and then add two more pills because of side effects, making you feel more like a lab rat and less like a human being. These are the programs that are slowly causing addiction and suicide rates to rise in veterans in active military duty. The overuse of SSRIs, or selective serotonin reuptake inhibitors, better known as Zoloft, Lexapro, Prozac, and Celexa, have horrible side effects such as insomnia, extreme dizziness, severe weight fluctuation, and not to mention that little black box warning that comes on them that tells you that it also causes increased suicidal thoughts and tendencies, where you become recommended to be watched closely for any type of worsening behavior when taking these. Not to mention the withdrawal from these pills, which, by the way, take 30 days to build up tolerable levels in your system, have withdrawal symptoms that come with flu-like symptoms, nausea, swelling, and in some cases, result in the patient being left in a coma. We deserve to choose what our to choose what our treatment plan is, especially if cannabis is a viable source for alleviation of these issues, as has been proven in study after study, rather than being forced to take a cocktail of pharmaceuticals that are just tossed out to people to keep you moving through that VA door. The perception that marijuana use leads to further crime, or that is a gateway drug, or a harder substance, can be traced back to nineteen thirty-seven by Harry Anslinger, the original proprietor of all of this malarkey, for public support for, uh, for marijuana prohibition, wildly throwing out accusations that it made you into a machete murderer, or even led you into do cocaine and harder drugs like heroin. This, of course, couldn't be disproven then, but can now. In fact, there is no direct official study or correlation that cannabis use in medically legal states has increased the use of harder substances at all. While many law enforcement officials worry that medical marijuana will increase crime rates or have more impaired drivers on the road under the influence, statistics show that only a slight increase even happens with vehicular classes due to cannabis use. Most states have even seen that number level out or drop because the patients do not operate motor vehicles underneath medical cannabis, as they didn't whenever they were taking pharmaceuticals. Reports from California, Washington, and Colorado have seen up to a twenty percent decrease in violent property crime rates, shrinking the black market, along with the associated violence it carries along with it. At the same time, this relocates police resources towards deterring real crimes and harder offenders from happening. Just the presence of medicinal dispensaries in towns has shown to decrease the amount of petty crimes in the area due to increased security that is mandated that they have to be compliant. Other issues that have been brought up with the medicinal legalization of marijuana are public consumption and the increase in homelessness in cities that have the program. To address these issues in other places, legislation was written to be able to limit the consumption of cannabis to your own private domicile. Not to mention that it cannot publicly be consumed and interfere with others. There is also no known increase in homeless population due to the fact that this is medicinal legalization, not recreational, leaving no reason for anyone to move across country when recreational cannabis is readily available in over eleven other states. I brought with me, as you see here on your paperwork with you, there are two, there's a chart. One, the states, I'm going to talk this evening to some people, this is the, one, the states, the number of overdoses and deaths that appeared from opioids, prescription medications, and not to mention heroin here in North Carolina. This isn't Maryland, this is North Carolina. Now, if you notice, there's a drastic spike that increases from two thousand fifteen all the way to two thousand seventeen. We could have very well possibly prevented that from happening, just like Colorado, Washington, California, back in ninety-six, they could legally, medically recognize marijuana for what it is, a helpful drug. Not to mention, also on your list, along with the qualifying links that I have to inform you guys for the research, I also have a list of the conditions that qualify to produce some of that marijuana in those different states. As you see here, I don't believe any one of these people, once they smoke marijuana, becomes a criminal. They're a harder drug, or they're anything that's going to be more harmful to themselves than what they've already put their bodies through. Now, I can show you graphs, spit off statistics, and talk all day long up here about studies and papers written on medical marijuana, but that doesn't get the full point across. So how about we do a live visual? Please, raise your hand if you're a resident of North Carolina. Thank you. Put it down. Now, please raise your hand if you know someone who has overdosed on drugs before. Please put them down. Please raise your hand if you know someone who has overdosed on marijuana. Now, lastly, please raise your hand if you know someone who could benefit from medical marijuana that's either in this chamber or that you know. Please leave them up. There's no more questions. I would like to thank the board for its time and end my presentation like this. Thank you.
At this time, item number seven, appointment of mayor pro temp for two thousand twenty and administration of vote.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the board. Um, as you do every single year, uh, you appoint a new mayor pro temp to serve for a one-year term. Um, at section two point four of the city's charter provides that at first meeting in December, the Board of Alderman would choose one of its members to be the mayor pro temp. Uh, so at this point, I'll turn it over to you.
Mayor, I'd like to thank everyone for the opportunity to serve, uh, this past year as mayor pro temp. Fortunately, it wasn't as hectic as the year before when Alderman Bingo had to participate in many events, uh, due to Hurricane Florence. Uh, so I just wanted to say thank you for the board for your support. With that being said, I'd like to make a nomination for Alderman Astor to serve as mayor pro temp.
Do we have a second to that motion?
I second that motion.
We have a motion and second is their discussion. The board can do whatever it pleases, if you, as long as it's legal with the city attorney. At this time...
Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I, I think, I think Mayor Pro Temp Odom has done an excellent job, has, obviously has the time to do it. And I would like to nominate Jeff Odom for mayor pro temp.
You can decline to serve, otherwise they may give a, Mayor, um, Alderman Astor, you can certainly decline the opportunity to serve if you like, and there, there will be no need for a vote. Otherwise, there would need to be a vote before we could take a completing motion.
Okay. Well, then I withdraw my motion.
Okay. At this time, seeing none, is there any other comments from the board? We have a roll call starting with Alderman Odom. Back for him?
Didn't he withdraw?
No.
He can withdraw.
He withdrew.
I withdrew my motion.
But not...
So we're back to the original motion of, um, Alderman Astor being, uh, second. Uh, motion by Alderman O, Odom saying of Alderman Kinsey.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Bingo?
Yes.
Motion carries. At this time, it's go to item number eight, conduct a public hearing. Go ahead, sir.
Do you want to sweep him in now?
Yes, let's do that.
Do I have to come down there?
You do.
I, Robert Astor, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, so help me God. I, Robert Astor, do solemnly swear that I will support and maintain the Constitution and laws of the United States, and the Constitution and laws of North Carolina, not inconsistent therewith, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office as mayor pro temp, so help me God. I, Robert Astor, do solemnly and sincerely swear that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the State of North Carolina, and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof, and that I will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution of said state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, to the best of my knowledge and abilities, so help me God.
This time, let's go to item number eight.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number eight is conduct a public hearing on rezoning twenty-four oh-three Trent Road. Um, uh, this is a two-part, um, uh, request, uh, during this particular item. Uh, first is to consider adopting a statement of zoning consistency or inconsistency. Uh, and then if the statement of zoning consistency is adopted, then the board is asked to consider adopting an ordinance rezoning twenty-four oh-three Trent Road from C four Neighborhood Business District to C three Commercial District. So at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Ruggieri, Development Services Director, for his presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Stevens. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the board. Uh, just a very quick presentation on the item before you for the rezoning of twenty-four oh-three Trent Road. The African is M, the African owner is N, M and W Properties of Eastern North Carolina. They are requesting to rezone one point three-one acres of land that's located on twenty-three, twenty-four oh-three Trent Road, from existing commercial four Neighborhood Business District to C three Commercial three Commercial District. It's in Ward three. There's your site, it's at the intersection of, uh, of, right, right across from Hotel Drive, directly across from the new street sounds, uh, right next to seventy. Everyone knows, everyone's very familiar with that parcel of land. Existing zoning, typical hodgepodge in this area, some C, most of it is C four, that light pink. There's that dark reddish color is C three, and all those yellows are residential, located around it. You'll see the C three located directly across the street from the parcel and, and across seventy. The request was heard by planning and zoning on October the first, um, and the recommendation to rezone was approved unanimously. That concludes the presentation. If anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
The board have questions?
Jeff, I'm just curious, is it, is it in Ward three? I didn't, we've had some conversation where we don't think it's in Ward three, because I remember the last time, you know, in twenty-eleven or twenty-twelve, when we redistrict, we took all the third ward and kind of put it across the river. So I think it might be second Ward, Trent Road.
I'll double check that. I will, I remember that conversation.
So I, I don't know that it's in Ward. I don't know if we have a zone, a ward map. Is that something?
You don't really make any difference that different. Does it make any difference?
It doesn't make a difference.
No, it doesn't make, not, not for your action, but I remember the conversation about, uh, the ward lines. We can pull that up real quick.
I'm, I'm doing it too.
Yeah.
Okay, the board doesn't have any questions. At this time, we're going to open a public hearing. Anybody from the public that would like to come forward, ask any questions, make comments, or statements concerning this issue, you're more than welcome to come up at this time.
Make motion, please, public hearing?
Second.
Motion and second is their discussion. Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. All opposed, same. Motion carries.
It is actually Ward three? It is Ward three. You are correct. How did you get the, that piece there, though?
Okay, Mr. Mayor, and then, um, I'd like to make a motion that we consider adopting a statement of zoning consistency, consistent with, um, the resenting request, is that correct?
Close enough.
Second.
Motion and second is their discussion. Seeing none, let's have a roll call starting with Alderman Bingo.
Alderman Bingo?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
All right. And now, say, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to consider adopting an ordinance rezoning twenty-four oh-three Trent Road from C four Neighborhood Business District to C three Commercial District.
Second.
Motion and second is their discussion. Seeing none, let's have a roll call starting with Alderman Odom.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Bingo?
Yes.
Motion carries. This time, it's go to item number nine.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the board. Item number nine is consideration of the board to adopt a resolution to initiate the upset bid process for two-two-zero-three Chestnut Avenue. Uh, J.K. Investment Holdings LLC has offered to purchase twenty-two-zero-three Chestnut Avenue for three hundred and seventy-five dollars. Uh, the tax value of the vacant small point zero-six acre lot is seven hundred and fifty dollars, and the offer represents fifty percent of the value. The property was acquired jointly by the city and the county through tax foreclosure in two thousand nineteen. Uh, taxes, interest, and penalties due to the city, at the time of the foreclosure, were five hundred and fifty-six dollars and forty-five cents. The city contributed four hundred and eighty dollars and ninety-nine cent, uh, toward the cost of foreclosure proceeding. If the offer is accepted, no other bids are received, the property is sold for the initial offer. The city would receive two hundred dollars in proceeds, less the cost of advertising. The county would receive a hundred and seventy-five dollars from these proceeds. There's a memo that's included in your packet. Uh, happy to answer any questions you may have.
The board have questions?
Uh, I'd like to make a motion adopting a resolution to initiate the upset bid process for two-two-zero-three Chestnut Avenue.
Second.
Okay, uh, Mr. Alderman Harris, I think the second was Alderman Best. Is there discussion? Questions? Seeing none, let's have a roll call starting with Alderman Bingo.
Alderman Bingo?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item number ten.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number ten is a resolution to approve, uh, an amendment to the agreement with the Housing Authority of the City of New Bern for the sale of a portion of seven-zero-three Carolina Avenue. Uh, on the thirteenth of November, two thousand eighteen, the board approved the sale of approximately seven acres of real property to the Housing Authority of the City of New Bern, properties located at seven-zero-three Carolina Avenue. Mosaic Development Group, a North Carolina nonprofit, intends to develop eighty-four units of multifamily low-income tax credit apartments on the property. Uh, tax credits of eight hundred and forty-six thousand, three hundred dollars per year have been awarded for a ten-year period. The buyer has discovered that some of the property cannot be developed because of the wetlands and conservation areas as previously outlined whenever we initially laid out the property. Therefore, it's been requested that the boundary line of the property be revised to include the area depicted on the exhibit that's in your packet, um, of the amendment. It's also requested that the closing date be extended from February first, twenty twenty, to June first, twenty twenty, to accommodate federal funding requirements and allow the developer to secure the financing for the project. Uh, section six of the agreement will also be modified to provide that the closing date may be extended from June first, twenty twenty, to September first, twenty twenty, upon payment of ten thousand dollars on or before May the first, twenty twenty, and further extended if needed from September first to November first, twenty twenty, upon payment of an additional ten thousand dollars. Uh, so terms of the, basically of the agreement are very similar. Uh, they're just looking for an extension on the time, uh, and also to redraft, uh, some of the boundary lines to make the development more feasible, because of the wetlands and conservation areas. So, uh, we have representatives here from the Housing Authority, uh, if you have any questions, and I'm happy to answer any of those as well.
The board have questions?
The only thing that I have is, um, is this like a mock-up of what it's, they're planning on putting there?
Um, that, of what is in your packet as far as the layout?
Yes.
Uh, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
That is, uh, the proposed development as was drafted by the developer, Mosaic Group.
And based on that, your recommendation, you don't have any issue with the, I don't think it's going to affect either.
No.
I'd like to adopt a motion, a resolution approving an amendment to the agreement with the Housing Authority of the City of New Bern for the sale of a portion of seven-oh-three Carolina Avenue.
Second.
Motion and second is their discussion. Seeing none, let's have a roll call starting with Alderman Odom.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Bingo?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item number eleven.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number eleven is a, uh, budget ordinance amendment for the FY nineteen-twenty operating budget. Uh, the budget ordinance amendment for you tonight will recognize insurance proceeds of twenty-eight thousand, one hundred dollars for a damaged vehicle, and thirty-three thousand, two hundred and eighty-two dollars for a vehicle that was declared a total loss. of $28,100 for a damaged vehicle and $33,282 for a vehicle that was declared a total loss. It's also acknowledges $66,425 in grant funds from the U.S. Department of Justice Project Safe Neighborhoods Grant Program and establishes a budget for that grant. The grant program is in place for gun and gang violence platform that is designed to inform the community of the restricted rights of felons and responsibilities regarding firearms and ammunition. Ms. Mulliken has prepared for you a memo, and we're happy to answer any questions you may have regarding this amendment.
Okay, does the board have questions?
Do you want to make a motion that we consider adopting an ordinance, budget ordinance amendment for the FY 1920 operating budget?
Second.
Motion and second is their discussion. Seeing none, let's have a roll call starting with Alderman Bingle.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Okay, let's go to appointments starting with Alderman Odom.
None tonight, sir.
Alderman Best?
None.
Alderman Kinsey?
None, sir.
Alderman Astor?
None.
Alderman, Alderwoman Harris?
None.
Alderwoman Bingle?
Yes, I do have an appointment to the Planning and Zoning Board. I would like to appoint Travis Oakley. He's an engineer, works down at the base, and I had a very nice conversation with him, and I think he'll be a wonderful addition to that board.
Second.
Motion and second is their discussion. Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same. Attorney's report?
Nothing important, Mr. Mayor.
City manager's report?
I have two quick items, sir. As I reported to you last time, I would come back to this board meeting with some information regarding the board's discretionary fund. We polled, as I said at the last meeting, I wasn't able to find anything on the school of government as far as guidance with regards to any kind of blog or policy that they had in place. We did poll Goldsboro, Havelock, Greenville, Morehead City. All of them do not have a discretionary fund that the board has or uses. Matter of fact, Goldsboro stated that their board considered adding a discretionary fund during their last budget process but chose not to because of the public scrutiny, potential misuse and concerns of how the money would be spent. Additionally, I did look, or actually, the city clerk looked and found some research on City Ethics Incorporated. There's written a book entitled Local Government Ethics Programs, and their concern was regarding discretionary funds such as council district funds leads to a great deal of misconduct. Obviously, we have a proposal or a policy in place that kind of helps with that. However, it still creates problems and situations of where do we spend it? How do we spend it? You know, what is eligible, what isn't eligible? And all of those things are kind of things that it hit on within this book. Basically, their recommendation was the best thing to do is to get rid of these funds altogether, and it was recommended by the South Carolina Ethics Commission after investigating an issue with discretionary fund use in Greenwood, South Carolina. So just some research that I've done, I'm happy to pursue that further if need be. But like I said, I wanted to poll some of the local areas, Greenville, Goldsboro, Havelock, Morehead City, and all of them do not have a discretionary fund for the board to use. So we can bring this up another time, but I wanted to report that back to you. The other thing I think the board had requested was providing you some information regarding some of the grants the city has applied for and received. I've got that list. I'm happy to go through it if you'd like for me to do that right now. Or I can make all of you a copy or an email and send it to you. Essentially, to date, I would say we're probably pushing about $800,000 in grants that we've received and been awarded since, basically, let's call it February of 2019, probably was kind of the first one that we received. We've applied for a lot more than that, probably totaling up to closer to $3 million. Some of those we have heard from, some of them we have not, in the affirmative or in the negative of whether we did get the award. So, but I will, if it's okay with the board, I will copy this, scan it and send it to you via an email unless you would like for me to talk about those.
The other part of that that I asked about, too, was what it cost us.
Sure.
So what the cost was that we paid the grant writer in order to get the amount of money.
And I will have, I'll be having to pull together the accounting for what that cost is. Matter of fact, Lori, can you shoot that to me and I'll include that in the email as well? That I'll send them as far as how much we've paid to date.
Thank you, Mark.
That's all I have, sir. And by the way, since it's kind of my time, Merry Christmas to everyone since this is our last meeting before this is here, and happy.
Thank you.
Okay, starting out on new business, I just want to briefly mention that at the start of the year, I've called this the year of the elevator at City Hall. And I noticed you had an aerial lift out there for a couple of weeks. I didn't know, maybe you were thinking we're going to have to get aerial lift or something to get our citizens up here. But I could give you some anecdotal stories about some situations in New Bern that things just dragged on and, they weren't about elevators, but they were about bathrooms or unsafe conditions as far as fire abatement suppression and things like that. But I really hope that the coming year, that we can decide. I know that we're, and you can bring us up to date on that.
Sure.
But the board needs to make a move in this area before somebody that is physically impaired or something tries to climb these stairs and gets hurt and falls down or something, or other things like that. This is fixing to be 2020. I just think it's time. I certainly hope that the board will take leadership as soon as, I know you're going to update this, but it's high time we have an elevator in this building. But go ahead and update something.
Sure. So I guess this was the year of the decision to begin the elevator discussion. Next year, I think the board's going to have to roll up some sleeves. We've got a lot of work to do. I think January is going to be a pretty busy month. We've got several different policy discussions that are going to come up, obviously, that the board had asked me to work on with regards to noise, with regards to some other, some other things that we've got. We've got a rewrite of our land use code that's going to be coming forth. But to talk about the City Hall elevator and where we are, we have been provided, as of our previous discussion points, the kind of mass planning of what we can put on this site and provide as far as square footage. Additionally, under the original scope of work, we had some money left over. So MBF Architects went back, provided us some pretty detailed cost estimates as far as what they estimate those costs to be. The next phase of that, which we've already executed the PO for, is for a phase that will consist of more plans and elevations so that we can start having discussions about how we want this building to look, feel, to maneuver around, everything else. So it really is more than just the elevator. It's more of the annex project. I think we still have it labeled as a project fund. It's called the City Hall Elevator Project Fund. But at some point or another, we would come for you for a change of that if the board wants to choose to do the annex. But they are pursuing that. It is our hopes that in January, probably the second meeting in January, we will have some real items to come present to the board. The architect will at least, as far as plans, the detailed cost estimates of what those plans look like, as well as the elevations. Spoke with Trip. I know Matt has kind of been working with Trip as well on that. So beginning January, we're going to start having some decision points for the board to really entertain because that's when it, I guess.
So you say that'll be in January?
Excuse me? Yes. Probably the second meeting in January, if I'm thinking, sir.
Well, I'm just going to...
My hope was to get that before you, before y'all, so that you could consider it. Maybe not that night as far as a decision. If you wish to do so, that's fine. But at least present it to you so we have it before our retreat, whenever we have our retreat on the 7th. So if we need to have a more in-depth discussion, I can ask the architect to come on that Friday as well as myself, and we can talk about, you know, financing or anything else that we need to talk about.
I think it's time is of essence on it. But let's go to new business with Alderman Odom.
Just one item, sir. I was able to finally connect with Tom Pike at Chick-fil-A today regarding the traffic that so many people have called and emailed and expressed their concerns about. Chick-fil-A is extremely willing to remediate the problem, but it falls upon the mall owner's responsibility or approval, if you will. So I would like to ask Mr. Ruggeri if you would reach out to Mr. Mulholland with the whole story, and let's try to set up a meeting to discuss Chick-fil-A traffic issues, the sign that's about to fall down at the mall, and also the disposition of the Kmart parcel now that the building has been demolished. That's all I have. Thank you, sir.
Alderman Best?
I'll make this brief. I don't want to talk too much. It'd be time. But I just want to comment on the medical cannabis. I am in support of that because, and my reasoning is being, I don't know if any one of you sitting up here on this board have had a family member that has cancer, that has succumbed to cancer. Let me get myself together because it's very touching. And to see my two aunts suffer with cancer, and now you're talking about this medical marijuana that could have helped them with their chronic pain, chemotherapy, which was just, it was, to see them go through that, it would just break your heart. And my take on this, if it's going to help somebody with pain, PTSD, I have a husband that's a veteran, so I know all about that. And if this plan that God put on this earth can be used for a purpose of helping somebody medically, I'm all for it. Now, for this... To just use for recreational purposes, I can't comment on that because I'm going to leave that up to the individual because you as individuals that use alcohol, that's for recreational purposes. But my main concern is for the medical cannabis. And I just hope that we as a board can take a deeper dive into this and look at this and just sit back and think about if it was one of your family members and you see them suffering and own morphine, and morphine is not helping them, you would take a step back and think about it more. That's all I want to say on that, but I could go on and on about that. But I don't, I sit up here and look like a crybaby, but it's really something that's touched me. And secondly, I just want to say that I'm not going to sit here and discuss what we as a board have accomplished and what we have implemented for this year. I just want to say that I hope this board, that all of us can work together as a unit and work hard and try to provide for our citizens of this city. And that is something that my focus is on. My focus is on, you know, let's put some pressure on the state so that we, as a board, put that pressure on the state. All of those of you that on this board that have representatives that you know personally, that you can contact, and to reach out to them and say, let's expedite this process of the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program, the 404 Grant Program, to try to get some of our citizens that are still displaced and not back in their homes, to get their homes elevated and get, for those that are interested in a buyout, to help them to expedite that process. And secondly, I want we as a board to work together to find developers. And I know a lot of us up here on this board know developers right here in town. I could list some individuals that are well-known developers, but I'm not going to do so because I don't want to leave anyone out. Let's get them to come in here and build some more low-income housing. Yeah. Apply for some of these tax credits. Get some housing for our citizens here. Bring some normacy back to the lives of our citizens that's been displaced. And thirdly, I, the Stanley White Rec Center has been a historical monument for the black community. And I want this board to work together so that we can build Stanley White back at some point on the parcel where it's currently sitting. And so that we, our citizens within the black community will feel that we, as a board, has not let them down, that we have their interests at heart as well as we do for the rest of our city. And lastly, but not least, let's put some pressure on the FEMA and USDA for getting funds in here so that we can get the funds in here to clear up this 80 miles of ditches and canals that floods just from hard rains. Again, let's support our citizens. Let that be our main concern is supporting our citizens, getting this done for our citizens. And I wasn't going to say this, but I am because for the last 20 years, citizens of the west end of New Bern, on the west end, which is growing by leaps and bounds, I've seen so many homes come within my community, they have been, they have been promised a community center, which has not come to fruition. And I would love that this board, we all agree that somehow we can accommodate that for our citizens. I think it would be a plus because that center can also serve as a distribution center and a shelter if it's in time of need. So I just, that's my focus. That's what I'm asking this board to do. Let's work together and work for the betterment of our city and mostly of all our citizens. And that's basically all I have to say.
Alderman Kinsey?
I'd like to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year and a very prosperous year. And I'm looking forward to come back and work for the people and make things happen.
Okay, Alderman Astor?
Yes, sir. As I was asking earlier, do we have any update on the mitigation that was submitted for the raising of the homes? Some of the homes that are people that applied for that?
The city did apply through to the state of North Carolina on behalf of 73 homeowners here in New Bern. There were 54 properties that were interested in elevation and 19 interested in acquisition as part of the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program, the 404 Program. We received information back from the state recently that 18 of the 54 properties proposed for elevation will be funded. We got a letter. I've sent back information to the state asking them to clarify what their process was for selecting those homes to try to determine if there would be any other funds or steps for those not proposed, as well as where they stood on the benefit cost analysis portion for the acquisition homes. And I've not received a response back yet.
Okay. But the 18 that were funded, have those residents been notified?
We have not notified them yet. We were waiting for further guidance from the state about how to go through that process. The final application will still have to be developed. I'm not certain if we are still awaiting to hear about the acquisition, if that's going to be in conjunction with this. So there are still just a lot of unanswered questions and guidance that'll need to come from the State Department of Emergency Management.
The problem, Amanda, and thank you for all the hard work that you do with this program, but the problem with this is that we've got people that their homes were washed off the foundation or flooded that applied for this, that are sitting there waiting. They're not even trying to get contractors in yet because they're waiting to see if this program's going to come through for them.
We've received guidance from both FEMA and the state that this is a lengthy process. So it does not keep people, I know it may seem counterintuitive if they're applying for an elevation program, but what the guidance from both the federal and state government have said, it does not keep people from using any insurance or FEMA proceeds to make repairs to their home to be able to occupy it. So this, this program will come later. So even though they've proposed to, you know, elevate or have their home acquired, it's not to keep them from utilizing those funds to make the repairs to inhabit their home.
Okay. But you do have a list of the addresses that were approved, correct?
Yes. And I believe we have shared it.
Well, you hadn't shared it with me, but I would love, I would love to see it.
Yes. Yeah, we'll be happy. We have, basically, we have a letter from the state that just says, you know, these 18 addresses have been chosen. They did not have funding to fund all of our...
Yeah, I would, I would love to see a copy of that, if you don't mind.
And I would as well.
I'm sure the city manager can send that out.
Thank you.
Let me, I'm sorry. Can I ask her something while she's at the podium? I know there was a November 1 date that some applications or something had to, was a follow-up that had to be submitted into the state. Did that get accomplished?
Yeah, we had, we had completed most of that documentation already. We just had to reach out to some homeowners for some additional documentation. But at this time, we don't believe that the state needs anything additional. But we do say, you know, we will contact those property owners if we find out of anything that's needed.
Thank you, dear.
Thanks.
Anything else?
Yeah, absolutely, dude. Wanted to thank Foster. The park and recreations, the parks in New Bern look beautiful. You guys have done an outstanding job. I know there's probably some of public works involved in there too, so I don't want to leave Matt out. But the Union Point Park looks great, and I want to thank you for it. And Matt, or Mark, one, two of you, give me a quick update on Old Airport Road to the citizens?
Brief, I can't hear. They have started on what we call Phase Two between Landscaped Drive and the bridge through Evans Mill. They have already widened the shoulder on the east side, and they have made the turn and they're back headed up the west side. Basically, they're widening the shoulder five or six feet, depending on the location, putting in the subbase. Once they get that done, they'll come back and do some full-depth patching in the middle of the road, and then they'll come back in, pave the shoulders, and resurface. Moving very well at this point. We've had no issues. Everything seems to be going pretty good. As far as the first phase, we've started obtaining the easements and preparing to move some of the electric utilities, getting the contracts put together now for execution with the second contractor and the city, and the contractor is hoping to start his part in January.
Thanks. Mr. Mayor, last month, our last meeting, we talked about suddenly, still no progress in Blue Water Rise. Promises keep getting made, but it's, it's just not happening. So I just wanted to let you know that. And finally, I'd like to also wish everybody a Merry Christmas and please stay safe. That's all I have.
Okay. Alderman Ongel?
Thank you. First and foremost, I just want to give honor to God, who's been a blessing for the year of, I guess I would exactly say what Alderman Best had to say, and the things that we have accomplished as a city, as a board, and the progress that we have. I just want to, you know, kind of piggyback off what she said. I just want to thank Max for putting yourself out there, putting your public life out there to be passionate about the subject. People are gonna talk. They're gonna say whatever they have to say, but I know your heart. I know you're a good man, a good family man, and I know that all you wanted to do was educate, and you've completed that task. So I'm very proud of you. You presented the information amazing. And I feel like if anybody has any questions, they know your direct number to get in contact with you, and it is an honor to be your Alderman and to serve you any way that I can. Secondly, you know, I do support it. I have a father that's a veteran. I have had nephews and brother-in-laws commit suicide, so I understand the benefit. Under new business, you know, you, you know, I want to be professional and have a protocol, but I know in 2020, I am going to ask for a second to at least bring a resolution to the board that we support you to go to the next level, which would be your state representative to show, yes, we do support the idea of the possibility that if it does become legalized, that we would want to support it because we know the benefits for the citizens and, and how it can have a positive effect on a lot of things that we do day to day. So I want you to know that that is my plan, and I'm gonna bring it. We're gonna write it. But if they don't vote, at least we know we put it out there, and we've done all that we can do. But you continue to go to your higher-up elected officials and let them know, show them the tapes, show them the testimonies, because it is something important. It's about progress, and that's what we say we're about in the city of New Bern. Lastly, it breaks my heart, Ms. Sampson, to see you come up to this mic and to, to have the thought that a city would forget about Duffy Field. I'm not from here. I've been here nine years, but I have been a part of that community even before I sat on this board through my brother Cory. And it's been a blessing to meet everybody in that community. And like Barbara said, if there's anything that I can do, I will continue to do to be the voice of the people. But like she said, don't ever come up here and think that you're forgotten, because we're, we're doing everything that we can. I know every other meeting, we're asking about that FEMA for Stanley White, and when it comes in, I mean, it is gonna be an amazing day when we get that, that information, because we're gonna tell everybody. You know, because we want Stanley White, because we know that is the heart of Duffy Field. So please don't ever feel that way. And if we've ever made you feel that way, I will apologize on behalf of the city. Because I'd love to see you and your husband serve like you do, come up here and tell us what's going on with the community, the things that you do to bring light to your community. Please continue to keep doing that. And if there's not any funds for me to do, I will take it out of my pocket to make sure that I can help and make sure there's food and water and anything for anybody in that community during those events. Again, I just want to thank all of my constituents in the city of, you know, the citizens to allow me to serve. It is a blessing, and I cannot wait until 2020 to see what we have in store with the projects that we want to do. And happy holidays and New Years. I hope to see everybody when the, not the ball, the bear drops. It's gonna be an amazing event. Foster, you know I love you, but that's all I have.
Okay. Alderman Ongel?
Okay. Matt, can you give me an update on Spencer Avenue? Have we, has the contractor gotten back out there and made those repairs or fixes that needed to be fixed?
The contractor moved his equipment in today. We're expecting rain tomorrow, so you'll probably see him on Thursday.
But has any work been done since the completion of the paving?
No, it has not. They moved back in, they moved their equipment back in today.
Okay, all right. And then I just want to update everybody that the, at our last, I think, meeting before last, we asked about forming a short-term rental committee. The, we asked the Planning and Zoning Board to do that. Ms. Anshao has, is chairing that. And we had our first meeting last Thursday, and I thought it was a productive meeting. I want to thank our attorney, Scott Davis, who came in and really helped the committee understand what the purpose of the committee is, what the purpose of the Planning and Zoning Board is, what we should do as a committee, and what their role was. And it's really the board of Alderman who make those decisions. But they're going to basically define what they think short-term rental is, get all that information together, decide, do we need an overlay district? Do we have it throughout the city? Is it in this zone, that zone? But we, we each have assignments. We're gonna be meeting, I believe it's twice a month so that we can have something back to this board in the spring, probably May or June, which I think is a good thing. So I did want to report on that. As everybody else stated, 2020, I love those even years, but I'm, I'm going to work as well. I have been working. I'm going to continue to work. And Ms. Sampson, I'm sorry you feel that way, because, you know, whenever somebody calls, I'm right there. I have, I have no, I have no issue with helping anybody in my ward, which Duffy Field is part of my ward. And again, I'm gonna continue to work. I'm gonna be honest, I've said this. I've been in New Bern for forty years, and I've seen nothing happen in that community in forty years, and it's time. When I came into office, I said it was time. And we're gonna, we're gonna do some things, because that neighborhood deserves what every other neighborhood has, and it shouldn't be any less than the least of our neighborhoods. So we will be working with my colleagues. We'll all be working together to make sure that good things happen. We will be working on the elevator. We'll be working on noise. We'll continue to work on parking. We'll be continuing to work on infrastructure. Fortunately, the first ward, ward is the oldest ward in the city, and our infrastructure needs the most work. We're gonna continue to be working with that, and I look forward to working with all of you and making these good things happen. I do want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas, a Happy New Year. How blessed we are to live in this wonderful little community. It's, it's so wonderful to drive around and see how pretty people really, you know, take an opportunity to celebrate the birth of our Lord, and I don't think there's anything better than that. But to those of you who are not of that faith, I wish you Happy Hanukkah, Kwanzaa, all the wonderful holidays that we celebrate this time of year. And I'm looking forward to our New Year, but thank you.
Yeah. Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Blanco, I just wanted to ask you, have you given away the tickets to the employees for the tour yet, or is that this Friday?
The contest runs through Friday at noon, and then we'll give them away.
And that, thank you for coming up with that idea. That was a good idea to involve the employees in that.
Okay, anything else at this time? Do we need a closed session tonight?
Yes, sir. City manager needing a closed session to discuss the personnel matters. Pursuant to 143, 311, 86.
Motion and second is their discussion. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same. Motion carries.